Will you mind please rise for the pleasure?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call lead order. Go call.
Mayor Westergaard.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Note Frank and Beckman are absent.
Public forum, would anybody like to address the council public forum?
Yes, I would.
If I'm recognized.
I know, I kind of grew the beard out a little bit. So, what I'm here today for is to ask for public ratings for the new building that my wife and I are looking to put up for our liquor store reduction center. So, with the current building design, the awning would end up sticking out above the sidewalk and there are posts that come down. I've got a lot of design here that you can look at, as well as what the overall scope of building is, which is that red outline there. I believe we already put a building permit in.
We're working on it right now.
So, we're working on the building permit and the whole reason why we're kind of coming at this so quickly is our contractor told us that if we can get it done within a couple of weeks and get it run broke October, we could save quite a bit of money. So, we're kind of scrambling to try and get all our ducks in a row and that's why we're kind of coming at this a little bit sideways and I apologize for that. But, we're just kind of asking for variance so we can put the awning out and have the posts come down by the sidewalk or in the sidewalk.
Did you, were you able to talk to, when we talked on Friday, was there any way to adjust that so that it was?
We haven't had a chance to talk to the Clary Building guy yet. We're supposed to have a meeting this end Wednesday or Thursday to see if we can adjust that, but if we can get the variance before we put the building permit in, I won't have to reduce the size of my building either.
Oh, as you'd have to move the entire building back and maybe you'd have to have portion of it of the canned storage yard.
So, right now, there isn't any, in part of that, there's no sidewalk. The sandwich shop has an awning that comes out. So, when we talked on Friday, was, there was, there is a possibility, because my biggest concern was the posts that would come down because they would be in the public sidewalk.
Correct.
So, they are having a discussion with the building people to see if there's any way that they could create support so that if the awning was put out, that it would be self-supported and not have to come down on posts.
Yes.
It's a six-foot awning, so I don't know if that's possible, but we're going to talk to them about it.
And then ultimately, it really also comes down to what it costs.
Right.
Because if the cost is too much, then we'd rather push it back if you say no on the variance and just take that additional footage off of the backside of the building with storage, which I don't want to do. That's why I'm here asking for variance.
Well, and see, and I don't know, you know, yeah, in the planning and zoning, I mean, it's, 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 the city's, you know, it's the public right of way and I know we have other buildings uptown. The building code doesn't specifically define how awnings would be, other than it states, you know, that they aren't technically allowed, but it doesn't really say when they're, you know, because we already have some that are existing. So, I just told him that, you know, they can certainly come to public forum. You can't make a decision tonight, obviously, and also, you know, be one of those things that, you know, would have to come forward, but that you guys could at least maybe, you know, give some type of an idea on the thought process there.
Does it not have to go through the variance board?
Huh?
Does it not have to go through?
Yes, it will have to probably go in front of, for a final decision, but I didn't know, you know, as far as a variance is concerned with the other buildings uptown, I didn't, you know, I just told them to make sure that they came and at least told what their project was.
Yes, because it's going to be quite, quite an excess of projects. We're looking at demolishing the entire thing and rebuilding entirely with a new building. One, to make it look better, and two, we still get the whole thing. I didn't know any of the liquor store there.
Well, and the other thing is, is if we talked on Friday, was maybe taking that six-foot awning back to not being as extensive as an awning as six-foot.
And that's where we cut off the back portion. It's just, when you, to look at how much storage I have to have, taking six foot off of my storage is like a thousand dollars worth of cans that I could have stored. That's money that I'm losing in storage.
Well, and the, and the other, I mean, I know that you guys are doing this and there's a time, there's a timeframe crunch with your contractor, so that's the public hearing and all of those kinds of things to actually go, you know, that's where we're sitting with the variance board is it would be difficult, because I know you're sitting in, you know, a time crunch. I could certainly have a special meeting with the council, but trying to get it all put in there, we, you know, we need to go that route.
We would be grateful with anything you guys are willing to do to help us, because I think this is going to be great for the city and it's going to be great for us in the long run. It's going to make down there look a lot better, because right now, I mean, my dumpster are right there on Main Street. It looks horrible. I know it does.
I mean, the biggest thing that we're going to have to have is we're going to have to have the building permit filed, so, you know.
And we should have that, my general contractor is actually running late. He's supposed to be here.
Yep.
He has all that paperwork for us.
Okay.
So, we should have that within the week to do things.
I think anybody who disagrees that would be a great addition to the community, I've just got to make sure you jump through hoops at the right time.
Right. Yeah, and I realize that there's a time crunch and we'll, we'll see what I can, you know, what we can do to try and get you through that.
If it wasn't for the amount of money that they're willing to knock off the price, we wouldn't have done this time crunch.
Plan was to start it next year.
Yeah, the plan was to start it next year, but they knocked off a lot of money on the building if we do it this year, because they don't have a winter project.
They want to break ground in October.
Right.
Yeah.
That's, that's why I'm kind of trying to push this.
We'll see if we can move along as quick as we can.
I absolutely love that.
We would greatly, greatly appreciate it.
Right. We appreciate what you're doing.
I have some question. So, there's no city ordinance really written regarding the...
Well, it does, it's, it's, it does state in the central business district something about awnings and different things in there.
So, my question was, is there anything in the ordinance about poles and posts within the sidewalk?
It doesn't say that, so that's, and that's...
Yeah.
And that, and that would be, that's my biggest concern about, about it is then it would be putting those poles and posts. Most awnings in the downtown business district are, you know...
Either caved or...
Yeah, they're, they're contained to the structure.
And we're looking into making it...
Right, yeah, and I know, and I know that you are, so, I mean, because that was a discussion we had on Friday. So, if you can get, even get your building permit to me tomorrow, you know, and I, we can start those processes, you know, we'll get it figured out.
Okay.
All right?
Sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good to see you, Brian.
Always.
Anybody else?
I'm just only covering up, sorry.
Oh, whoops.
That's fine. Thank you very much.
You got everything right? Okay, perfect.
Okay, consent agenda. Any additions or corrections? I asked, anybody else?
Okay.
Nobody said anything.
Okay. Additions, I would like to add approval to, for the support, for the grant implication for a walk-in cooler for the community center. Just, we can put it wherever. That's what I want to add to the document.
Most approve the agenda, so.
Second.
Second. Go call.
Walton.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Okay, you two need to stretch the report.
All right, we backed and found the line at the car wash, discussed with the contractor, the meter and et cetera. So, got the meter and post set for the boulder sign, terminate, fixed the volleyball lights down there, had a bad neutral, finished some elbows, did some disconnects, continue to work on our letting copper reduction rules, which is due October 16th. Fixed the street signs, locates winterized splash pad, pothole up by Denny's so we could find the main that we ended up tapping. We tapped an eight-inch water main over by Mr. Babcox. We also tapped the four-inch main up by Denny's for the new building that's going up. Descaled our high service pump, ordered wire for a couple of jobs that we have coming up. Pushed up the brush pile, had Third Street Vine and Summit Harrison done by the payment doctor to see if this type of patching will stick better than our cold patch does. Replaced some flags that were set per the homeowner's request. Did the terminators for the community center, ran the wire up the pole, swept the streets, removed three trees, amp checks. We needed the dump. Worked on, or worked with the county to have the dump pushed up for us as it was starting to get out of control again. Removed the swim ropes, the volleyball nets. Installed the base for the transformer at the community center. We had a plugged chlorine injector at the water plant and a pinhole leak in our chlorine injection line, fixed those. Fixed the pothole on Dennison Beach. Discussed some issues with the DNR, with PFOS and some other stuff that they're coming up with. Fixed the storm drain on second and high. Worked with the boring company and get the prices, which is part of your packet, and then we set the transformer at the community center, along with probably 900 other things that I forgot to mention. Tried to keep it short for you, Dave.
Any questions? City administrator report.
I've been working on, with the board, on policies, on pricing and different things with, for the community center, and we're trying to finalize hopefully this week some of the interior carpet samples. I've got those, and so we'll work on that tomorrow night. I worked fairly extensively with Eric and with some staff on a building permit last week, making sure that we hopefully have that figured out now. Trying to work on some of our financials, did some grant reimbursement requests, worked on some new sensors.
Any questions? Chief, Johnson.
Yep. So, so far this month, we got 102 calls for service. Started getting the cars decal, chopped off mine, got mine back, and then we chopped off the light charger, actually about 20 minutes ago. Other than that, we've got too much. We did firearms annual training, so everybody's qualified for the year last week. Coming up, I have a class, going to Marshalltown for a couple of days for K-9 handling, so that's going to be something fun to do. Other than that, I think that's it.
Where do you, where do you do your firearms training?
So, at the county dump. We have a little range in the back, and that's where we do our firearms training.
Okay.
You're also getting ready to do the testing for...
Yes, that's what I forgot. So, I have testing coming up for new applicants. We have two. We have Nels and another kid from Dennison, so that should be on September 22nd. We'll do the physical test. To pass the physical test, they'll move on to the written test, which is the post exam. And if they pass both of those, we'll figure out, start going on to the next step, which will probably be interviews, so.
Okay, thanks all three of you. Okay, we have building pit, blue house, we have four for concrete and a fence committee. These are all okay, Eric?
Yes.
I'll make a point on the Richard Logran property. We went out there and did string line. Eric also did it too. I think we've had enough eyes on what, the changes that they intend to make, to make it so that it will, they will comply with the setback rules on the east side. They comply and they made changes and comply on the west side. The deck, Eric and I went out there and we remeasured everything. They intended to put in a second tier deck and we told them that they couldn't come out all the way that they wanted to. They had to comply with the neighboring property, so we told them that they can only come out, I think about five and a half feet with that, with the upper level deck. So, I, we've done our best to assure that it meets all of the rules and regulations of the zoning.
Motion approved. Second.
I'll second it.
Go call.
Walton.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yeah.
There you go. Thank you. Sorry it took so long.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
I just got one question. Can I pick up my permit if we start again, so I have to post it on the premises and some city required it?
No.
Okay. I didn't think you'd...
No, you just, yeah, you got your permit, so you're good.
Thank you for your...
Yes.
Thank you.
When can I pick that up tomorrow noon or...
Well, we have it ready tomorrow.
Yeah, Mayor can sign it in the morning and we can give him a copy at that time.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll stop after lunch.
Yeah, you can come up, yeah, if you want to come up after lunch, that would be great.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll sign yours first.
There you go.
Okay, we're going to, we add to the agenda the application to the second foundation for a cooler for the community center, go match half.
Yep, so, what I am, what we're applying for a quote for is basically, it's going to be a walk-in cooler for, to be located behind the bar area. What we're asking the grant for is to have, it would have present, or service doors in the front. So, the cost of the cooler is $26,550 and that includes installation, all of the whole works. So, we'd be asking for a grant for half of that. So, I'm asking for council to support that grant application.
Motion approve that. You make that motion. Go call.
Stankin.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Walton.
Yes.
Okay, we have one person who has applied to be on the board of adjustment, Joanne Peters. She comes with a lot of experience and we have a hard time filling these positions. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Go call.
Stankin.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Okay, resolution 2024-31, the second republic date for the hearing.
So, we need to, with some of the changes that, that we did with the loan that we're trying to acquire and the bundling that we want to do with it, kind of need to actually start the process over again. So, I need to republish and we need to hold a public hearing. We'll do that on October 7th and basically we'll approve everything that night. I'll have information for you to, in fact, they're going to, they'll, the next couple of weeks, they'll go out and he'll actually have what we can do with the local banks and everything with that with the loan. I reduced it down. I took out the water and sewer project, the extension project down around Highway 20, that specific project that we had JEO take a look at. So, you're now looking at about $875,000 to $900,000 for the loan versus the 1.3 million that we had originally started the volume. So, we just need to have the resolution to cover for the public hearing on October 7th and then we'll finish everything that night.
So, can I ask a question? So, the part of it that you took out, can you expand on that?
That was that water sewer extension project that we were going to do that was down off of Highway 175 that would have come, brought water main from the north side to the south side and then extended it up. I don't know, how many feet was that?
958 feet.
958 feet.
All the way to the end of the property.
Yep. So...
So, you don't need it?
It's not that it's needed. We just decided not to do it at this time, just to push that project back for a while, you know? Yep.
And the fire equipment bus?
Has been delivered.
Okay.
Yes.
We're going to finance that.
That'll be financed through both the township and then the general fund, so that won't have, even though that it states, we had to public, you know, we have to publish the maximum impact it would be if we were to put everything into debt service. We don't intend to put everything into debt service. So, like the fire bus, it'll get paid through the township funds and the, the general fund. And then however, we would take a look at like the street sweeper, it would probably get paid through partially on some road use tax dollars and then maybe some debt service in order to, to get that payment complete. So...
We've done this on all the fire trucks since I've been around.
Right. Right, yeah. So, how, how we would intend to pay for all of this won't be completely impactful out onto the general taxpayer. It's just, we're going to try to find some different funding sources. This is just to reimburse us to, you know, for the money that was spent on it in what we had agreed upon actually a long time ago, so.
Motion approve resolution 2024-31. Is that good? Second.
I'll second.
Go call.
Walton.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Okay, folks, some cost information on board units. Jason?
Okay, so, the water line that come from the north going south over to the car wash is a one-inch line. This new storage unit needs water. We have, we have, I mean, multiple different options, you know, one of the options was that we extend the whole thing and do, which was just cut from that bond. So, when I went out for this, we, we did two different quotes. We can do a two-inch line bored underneath the road, because we have to bore it. The state's not going to give us permission to cut their highway open and open trench it, so it has to be bored. And with it being bored, it has to be cased, so that's where the price is coming to play. So, we did a price for a two-inch line to bore it across, and then we can run the service lines to the building based off of the two-inch line. The other thing that we could do is we could bore a six-inch line, come off there and we can take it just enough up just to the, the first storage unit, and we can tap off that six-inch line to give him the water that he needs there. It also sets us up for the future if we ever do decide to expand that line further down. Now, we already had the boring done. We don't have to do it again. The other portion of it is, is I also feel that with a six-inch line there, if we bore the six-inch line across, it's also going to help him with his car wash and the issues that he is currently having at his car wash with a storage shank and a pump and everything like that. There is a cost difference. If you look at your price quotes, the two-inch line is $17,000, the six-inch line to bore across is $41. But, based off our city ordinance, we have to be able to provide him water to his property and his unit. It just depends on, do we want to do the small fix or do we want to do the big fix?
What's the time for?
I, I can have Biddy come in and start boring as soon as he can get materials. So, I would assume, I think the field needed to be harvested probably. If we do the six inches, the field has to be harvested first because of the yellow mine, so they got to put a 12-inch casing in and then the six-inch line in the 12-inch casing. That's going to take us to go out into the field to do that. Two-inch line, he probably could be able to get started on that before the crop comes out, but that's where, if he decides to add another unit or whatever, we'll be doing the exact same thing, probably sooner than later. So...
I don't want to tell you that you have to do it next year, but it could happen very easily, so.
You know, do we spend the $41,000, put the six inch over, which sets us up for the future, or do we just get him what he needs currently? That's why...
I think we're pretty close to having the crop coming out anywhere.
We are fairly close, yes.
How are you financing this?
Well, that's the next question, and when we have to provide him water, we don't have an option. So, the question that I do have, because this is servicing primarily you at this time, is there any chance of a cost share if we are to do the six-inch line?
I don't know what you expect, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
I mean, you know, I, I already paid to go 80 foot of sewer that I didn't, shouldn't have. I mean, if this other project, not, I guess they shouldn't have, but I just did it.
And I'm just throwing it out there and asking you the question, so, you know.
And I don't know at that point, if I got to pay some, I could probably get someone to bore it myself at a, we didn't have to do it the, you know, I don't know.
Right.
I think I can probably get it. I don't know.
I'm just, I'm, yeah, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, because, you know, the council's got to consider all their options.
I mean, I, there's, there's six units right away, probably six that are going to want water, utilities. Yeah.
Okay.
I, I mean, I'm not saying it can't be. I, I would need to know number, I guess. I'm, I'm over budget, just like everyone, just want to build something.
Right, exactly, right?
Yeah, and I think that area of town looks a lot, lot better than it did when I bought it. I wish I was going to take these overheads.
It looks much better.
Yeah. But, yeah, that, that would have to be discussed, I guess, you know.
Well, we'll see what the council has to say. What do you guys like to do?
I'd like to see a series of some negotiations first, kind of see what can work out.
Well, I mean, at the end of the day, probably the better of the two options is to put the six-inch line underneath there, but yeah, and then again, if it's just, I mean, that's pretty, I mean, it's double the price. So, you know, just to get him, you know, what are requirements, the two-inch line would get, get us what he needs.
Question is, do you think that putting that six-inch line will hurry up improvements? You know what I'm saying? With that capability, with other things?
I think I would feel a lot more comfortable by adding one with a fire hydrant on that side of the road that probably needs to be done. I mean, in all actualities, that, I mean, yeah, it couldn't go without one, sure, but I think we'd all agree there needs to be one there probably. That, that's, that's probably the biggest advantage. I can make a two-inch work, yeah. I mean, but come next year, I'm going to probably need another one then.
Where's the nearest fire hydrant at?
On the other side of Iowa, across from the car wash.
Well, yeah, across from the car wash, because that's where we would be bringing, yeah, tapping into and then bring up probably a fire hydrant across the road. We can certainly explore those options and see what they are. The biggest thing is I know that you're wanting to get, you know, if we're going to do the six inch line, we have to wait for the crop to come out anyway.
Right, right, I, I...
But, I know that we need to get the materials ordered as well, so.
I know that, you know, apparently time is an issue. I'm not exactly sure why it waited so long, that time is now the issue. But I, I depend on how you plan on financing this. You know, this should be an SRF loan. It's a low interest loan. You get money back on the project. That's how we did the fish barrier. I just think, I understand Teresa thinks it's time consuming, but...
Well, it's not that time consuming. It's just, it has to be, this wouldn't have to be engineered, because it doesn't hit the threshold. An SRF loan on a 50, you can't necessarily, they don't necessarily like to do, on a $40,000 project, they aren't going to do an SRF loan, you know, with those kinds of things. And it would have to be engineered, because that's a whole process in and itself for the SRF loan. If we, the water sewer extension project could be done with an SRF loan because of the extensive project that it is, but then it, you're, you know, you're still, you have to apply, you have to get approval, you have to do, you know, all of those things. And when we did, worked on the project over the summer with JEO, that wasn't necessarily the intent, because they did it for free, you know, there wasn't, the, the thought process is like to go to that next step of an SRF loan. So, yeah, but you couldn't, you couldn't do that with this. It's just, it's not a big enough...
And you'd have to pay engineering fees on it then and have it engineered in order to qualify for that, which then is going to add to your cost immensely.
Right, yeah.
Well, that may, that's probably true. I'm not arguing that point, but then I'm saying, how are you financing it? Right, which is what they're... If you're taking a bond issue, then it's a big, it's a big deal.
Well, yeah, but we wouldn't, we'd have to find where the money was coming from, because there's no, I mean, the $41,000 that is here is not large, you know, I wouldn't put that into a bond issue, so.
So, what's our plan of attack?
If council wants to wait and have us look at this just a little bit further and figure out the different options on, you know, possible negotiation or how we could get this financed, then... I don't disagree. I don't disagree.
But he's not out and getting the help as well.
No, he's not. We're required to get him.
I guess I can, I'll, I'll dig a well, I guess, if you want wells all around your town. That's my next step. I gotta have water. I got three people moving in.
Well, yeah. Unfortunately, our.
When did I, when did I, I get, I get that. But when did I apply for the building permit? That's when we knew for sure I needed water. It didn't happen last week when I started talking about this. I thought we were working on this all. Everyone told me, wait, it's gonna take a while. I get that. But now here, I've waited a while. We had JEO or whatever they did, and that got us nowhere. I mean, we know, we all knew it was gonna be expensive to do that. I never knew they were doing that whole thing. All I wanted is water and sewer. The sewer was there, I wanted water. We all knew it needed to come across, from across the street.
Right. And the idea is, but to get it to you from across the street is gonna be a little bit more than just us tapping from across the street because we have to come up and it's, you know, yeah.
I get that. But I've been waiting since.
Because it's not directly across the, yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not.
That's my point. It didn't happen two weeks ago. And now here we are in almost October. And so now every time, I wait two more weeks because of council, but, I mean.
I mean, we, we could, again, we could have another special meeting too. If we're gonna, if we're gonna do it, we need to do it right.
No, I hundred percent agree with that.
If we run a two-inch and then come back and do a six-inch.
No, it would not be foolish. I agree.
That's about a wise decision in my mind.
No, it isn't. You're right.
So, so, you know, and like I said, we gotta wait for the crop to come out anyway. We gotta wait.
Yeah, but, but we're not gonna have an answer till after the crop's out. And then we're sitting waiting grounds for those.
Well, I'm hoping we're gonna get right on it and try to figure out.
Yeah, we'll get this figured out.
How we're gonna get her done, and get her done the right way.
I guess we'll try to figure out where to find the money. Although we are, we're gonna give you water, we know that.
Yeah, I understand that.
No action, no action by the council at this time. Okay, we have a contract with Tanner King about doing the artwork. Good on you, Senator. Go ahead.
My name's Kim Bromley. We live at, my wife and I live on Twenty Seven Seventh Street. I lived here twenty years, been gone for forty. During those forty years, I was a professor of art, teaching art, creating art. We just retired and we're back to Lakeview now. And we both wanna get, my wife Gretchen and I wanna get involved in the community. When I saw the agenda, I saw this item about this public art piece, and it got me thinking about several things. I've talked to a number of people in the community about what happened, and I understand it's a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to create artwork for the community center. I guess I, I'm ignorant about a lot of the things that have gone on, whether how the artists were vetted, if they asked for proposals from a number of artists, or if they just picked an artist because of human artists. But with this contract now, I see there's eighty-nine hundred dollars that's still out there that hasn't been approved. I'm thinking maybe there's an opportunity here. So I'm wondering if the artwork that's going out there, is it public art or is it just art in a public place? There's a difference. Public art engages the community. It involves a community. It has a community input. A piece that's just in a public space is basically decoration. I see an opportunity here to really create something really great. I think that would trigger me was just when they did use the whole twenty-five thousand dollars for just one of your pieces. But I guess that's the past now. And I don't mean to be critical about anybody that's been on the committee or done any of this at all. I'm just trying to bring new eyes to what I see here could be a possibility. So public sculpture, who does it represent? How does it represent the community? When we look at our community here, what are we? We're a lake community? We're an ag community? We're a business community? We're a vibrant community? So how would an art sculpture, how would an artwork, how would it reflect that? How would it best reflect that? Today, artwork is about engaging. How do you engage the public? Is it a piece that people can interact with? Is it a piece for them to go out and sit to have lunch with? How can it be engaging? Also, how does it enhance the aesthetic life of the community? How's it gonna make us a better community? I think these are all important topics for public art and not just a piece that's in a public space. Now, I understand there's been a committee that's, that's come up with some of these ideas and, you know, and celebrate that there is a committee. But I would ask, who's on that committee? Is the committee diverse? Does it include farmers? Does it include high school students? Does it include businessmen? Does it include artists? I think all those voices would be important for public art. And we look around in different cities that have, up to half of it was about. I think a good example is Sioux Falls. I don't know if anyone would bend Sioux Falls on Main Street, but they've got a sculpture on every corner. They must have at least twenty different sculptures just in their streets. And it makes it a vibrant place. It makes you stop and look and how do you engage with that piece? What does that piece say about the community? But it really enhances the whole area. And so I'm thinking, how, how do we move forward with the public art here in a few? We've got the Black Hawk, Chief Blackhawk, I think that's a wonderful piece. It's got a plaque there describing the history of everything. It engages you. We've got the piece at the library, which, you know, speaks to the library and reading and literature and things like that. But I'm wondering, with this eighty-nine hundred dollars, how could we better spend that money to make it a much more engaging piece? Now, I saw some images of what possibly could look there. And I think many images is a stone pier, a stone pier and a couple of cranes. We've got a stone pier. We can go see cranes out here in the marsh. How can we be more creative than that? Now, I understand Tanner is an excellent craftsman. I've seen his work. I think he's got a wonderful job in terms of craft. But I think there's a way that we can stop it in terms of more intellectually engaging, socially engaging. And so therefore, I would ask that the city council put this at hold and look, plan to maybe better use this money. How does it, how can it be used to be educational? How can it be used to be engaging? How can it be interactive? And how can we be more creative? And how can it reflect on the community in a better way? So that's all I can say. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Ricky, do you have anything?
Well, you know, I'm on the Hometown Pride Committee. Now, we have a board. The Hometown Pride Committee took care of this art, not the board. I will tell you that, and I'm not being critical either, we, we've been five years in this project. In five years, committee members have kind of come and gone. So in the beginning, we probably had the entire mix you're talking about. I don't remember if we had any art people. We're limited on art people here. Although we have an art council, I don't know that they expressed any interest. Doesn't mean they shouldn't have been asked. I, you know, I just don't know. But anyway, so with the grant preparation and it's just been a long, it's been a long, rocky road. And so it was working with Iowa Finance Authority. You know, we got a Great Places. First, we were designated as Great Places. Then we got the Great Places grant. Then we got an extension onto that grant for the artwork. Teresa, correct me if I'm wrong. The problem was, I, I think that, again, no one came from the art council to offer anything when, you know, that was publicized. We went with the sculptor from the library. Part of the grant application was we had to tie it in with the cultural part, had to tie in the rest of the community, not just the community center sitting out there. So that's why we ended up with the sculptor from the library. We wanted to make it connect that. That may be wrong or right, I don't know. But that's what we did.
So the artist that did the sculpture at the library is actually doing a piece for the community center.
Has anybody seen an image of what she's doing?
Yeah. 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 We've, we've gone through painstaking, you know, you know, meetings with the artist herself. She actually is gonna be presenting what almost her final version is, I think, next Saturday.
Yeah. And, and she, she was very open to, you know, we wanted to bring in the lake. We had to bring in cultural in order to qualify for this grant. The problem was, Kim, is that we had a deadline. And we didn't know what her sculpture was gonna cost us. You know, the original was to spend all of it on that sculpture. And then that didn't prove to be. She was cheaper than we expected. And so then we decided to utilize a local artist. And we, we wanted, just like you'll notice the stone out there, it was to match the stone piers. It was supposed to be that kind of stone. We couldn't just stick up anything. It was to tie it in. And so that's why we went with Tanner and the stone pier out there. And had we had an artist on the committee, maybe a different decision would have been made. But, you know, frankly, we ran out of time.
Well, and, and part of it, because I did send this to the, because we're working with, you know, I own Great Places, which is got the art piece. And they basically, you know, I sent this off to see if it would be a qualifying piece because originally it was to incorporate, you know, the lake, the look, you know, the uptown look. We have, you know, some of the piers of town. That's kind of probably why, you know, some of this appearance of this piece, because it's, it's as far, as far out of town as, you know, possible. So then it incorporates some of what we have closer into town, you know, into that. So the big, yeah, the biggest thing is, is in a sense, timeframe. This grant was actually to be completed at the end of June. We got an extension to the end of August. We're now sitting in September. And, you know, I, so far, they've been very gracious. If we don't, if we don't do something, we're gonna lose the money, is basically, you know.
The deadlines were tight. And, and we didn't really know, because we spent so much time on the, the major sculpture, that we didn't even really know that we were gonna have this money for Tanner. But I, I was adamant about using Tanner because I feel like he's, he's just a gem in the, in the middle of Northwest Iowa here, and we could utilize him. Tanner will do whatever you want him to do. He did not design it. We took what we wanted. We wanted to tie in the lake and the stone pier and anything. And so that's kind of how it was. I will tell you that we were crunched for time.
Yeah. I mean, can, in the next couple of weeks, could the final design change? Right. But it was just, basically, this is just getting us contracted with Tanner so that we can move on to the next step and make sure that we've got, you know, the piece ready.
Yeah, I didn't know what, because Teresa had to make a deadline. And I think Tanner said to us, because the actual picture that you've probably seen is pretty much it, although Angie Bennett is working on that a lot. She's the graphic design. She doesn't like the way the cranes look, you know, she wants that kind of change. But what Tanner said was, as long as it's not huge changes, I can make it work as long as we just get it approved for the grant. So, yeah, maybe there are things that could be changed if you wanna speak, you know, and if that, when, when Gail is here with that sculpture, maybe, you know, you're certainly welcome to come during the, and I'll let you know. I, I need to get one of your phone numbers. About the other day, I don't have it. Because we're, it's Saturday at lunchtime or something?
Yes, it's the twenty-seventh Saturday.
She's gonna have a mock. She's been great to work with. She's, you know, tried to, you know, because we're worried about the wind, you know, we wanted it to be not just a boat. And she was adamant about, I don't wanna take too much time, but initially, we were just gonna have a boat or a sail, a sailboat. And then she was adamant that it needed to be community. It needed to be people, you know, of course, that's her thing is people. So then we incorporated that into the sculpture with, with the skirt and the bow. And I will tell you that it was a lot of discussions, lots of discussions. So, yeah, I'll let you know and come and maybe you've got some input. And I'm sure Tanner's flexible.
So there's possibly a design change?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. I mean, I'm not gonna stick my head out. I'm only one on that committee, but you're welcome to come. Right. I'll let you know.
Okay. Council would like to approve the contract with Tanner. Second?
I'll second.
Rule call.
Wilton?
Yes.
Stan Camp?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, pay, pay application number five, Mr. Big Center Sandy. Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Rule call.
Stan Camp?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Wilton?
Yes.
Okay, we have a change order too. For the gas line pipe service.
Okay, so the gas line, as you guys have been made aware of, Black Hills Energy will only take the, the gas line to the northeast corner of the building. Originally, it was designed that would go around the, you know, that the gas would go around the building to the, the west side to the mechanical room, and that's where the meter was intended to be located. Because that's not gonna happen now. So we, we looked at two different possibilities. One, bring it into the building and going through the building with the gas line, or in a sense, taking it around the building and putting it to where it needs to be. The change order that's in front of you is to, to take it from that northeast corner out, you know, on the outside of the building and bury a gas line and go around the building as, as it should be. The additional cost or the cost of installation of the underground gas service is four thousand nine hundred, sixty-seven dollars and sixteen cents. I don't think, you know, pretty much it's the way it needs to be.
Yeah, that's the right way. I'll make that motion.
Second. Rule call.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Wilton?
Yes.
Stan Camp?
Yes.
Okay, the police needs a new laptop.
Yep.
Just a budget?
Yeah.
Okay, so basically, the laptops, all of the, the, the tuck, the tuck books that we got for the squads were basically used pieces of equipment that we got when the county replaced all of their equipment. The one squad, actually, it's Georgia squad, it quit working. It, it won't take on the, the internet service and, I mean, there's, it basically is nonusable. So him and I worked on this. He went out and got a price for a new one. The idea is eventually, as we start to change out, you know, because what, was it eleven years old, George?
Yep.
You know, so we get one this year and maybe we put it in the budget to replace one next year. So that we aren't having to get each, each new one, you know, all at one time, or try and seek out, you know, the potential for used equipment. Just because in five years, they're pretty much obsolete at some point, just with the technology changes in the world today. So, yes, he does have in his technology budget, we looked at it, we went through it the other day, he does have the money in his budget to be able to spend, so.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Second.
Rule call.
Stan Camp?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Wilton?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance, five thirty-one is the second reading of the amending of water rates for the City of Lakeview.
Ordinance number five thirty-one and ordinance amending chapter ninety-two, amending provisions related to water rates for the City of Lakeview, being enacted by the Lakeview City Council, section one, chapters modified. Chapter ninety-two point zero-two, the code of ordinances of the City of Lakeview, Iowa is repealed, and the following adopted in lieu thereof. Rates for service, water service shall be furnished at the following monthly rates within the city. First two gallons, two thousand gallons or part thereof, sixteen dollars and forty-six cents. Gallons over two thousand gallons, four dollars and seventy cents per one thousand gallons, meter charge, dollar fifty. Outside city limits, first two thousand gallons or part thereof, twenty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. Gallons over two thousand, seven dollars and five cents per one thousand gallons, meter charge, a dollar fifty. Bulk water, eighteen dollars and sixty-seven cents for the first one thousand gallons, ten dollars and fourteen cents per one thousand gallons thereafter. Bulk water, water dispenser and fire station, seven dollars for every one thousand gallons. In no case shall the minimum water service charge for water use be less than sixteen dollars and forty-six cents per month. Chapter ninety-two point zero-four, the code of ordinances of the City of Lakeview is repealed, and the following adopted in lieu thereof. Billing for water service, late penalty, late payment penalty, bills not paid when due shall be considered delinquent. A one-time late payment penalty of twenty-five dollars per account per month shall be added to each delinquent bill. Chapter ninety-two point zero-five, the code of ordinances of the City of Lakeview is repealed, and the following adopted in lieu thereof. Service discontinued, fees. A reconnection fee of fifty dollars shall be charged to a customer whose service has been disconnected due to delinquency. Chapter ninety-two zero-nine of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Lakeview is repealed, and the following adopted in lieu thereof. and the following adopted in lieu thereof. Temporary vacancy within the city. A fee of fifty dollars shall be charged for shutting the water off at the curb stop. Outside the city, a fee of seventy-five dollars shall be charged for shutting the water off at the curb stop. Section two, all ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict with provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall be in effect after its final passage, approval, and publication.
So, second?
One second.
Rule call.
Walton?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Okay, ordinance five thirty-two, amending the sewer rates, city.
Ordinance number five thirty-two, an ordinance amending chapter ninety-nine, amending provisions related to sewer rates, being enacted by the Lakeview City Council, section one, chapters modified. Chapter ninety-nine point zero-six of the code of ordinances of the city of Lakeview, Iowa is repealed, and the following adopted in lieu thereof. Waste water. First two thousand gallons or part thereof supplied, thirty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. Gallons over two thousand gallons supplied, eight dollars and ninety-six cents per one thousand gallons. Each contributor shall pay sewer service charges for the use of, and for service supplied by the union's full wastewater system, the amount of thirty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents per month for two thousand gallons supplied. In no case shall the minimum service charge be less than thirty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents per month. Additionally, each contributor shall pay the rate of eight dollars and ninety-six cents per one thousand gallons in excess of the two thousand gallon minimum referred to above, as determined by the water meters provided by the city. Passed and adopted the seventh day of October.
Motion to approve?
I'll make it.
I like the motion.
One second.
Rule call.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Stankin?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Okay, the final read is next one. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
Second? Be your adjourn.
You can take care of Dr. T.
Thanks, Jim. My.